Finally get to see inside the mind.
What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at uh I win flips and history. He took down the Sunday monster stack twenty-five for six grand, six point three grand. So it was a nice little score, a big field as well, and nice little Sunday tournament. So let's, let's, let's look at the hands. Also, a lot of us have done well in this tournament. Jeremy won it.
Mm-hmm.
I won it.
I was gonna say, I think you did well in it too.
Seven percent for fresh is a little crappy though, to be honest. I mean, it's a nice win. I'm not putting the wind down. It's just that she's like.
Huge field.
Well, he made it deal. He made.
Yeah, he.
Oh, okay.
Chopped.
Makes sense.
He chopped three away.
Okay, so first hand complete seems normal. Check, check on the flop. Yeah, on the turn.
All sticky. Okay, not that sticky. Yeah, dry side pot. Probably not bluffing too much.
Nine?
The opponent.
I think it's yeah, big bet, right?
I would use big bet here.
Okay.
He goes small. It's fine.
It's pretty disconnected still. It's small is probably fine. He's got the spade.
It's not gonna be wrong.
It was nine five.
As well.
It was nine, five, two. I think he definitely go poor. Nine, four, two might drive your bet size down.
I agree.
I think it's just gonna, I mean, we're super deep. I think it's probably just gonna prefer a large bet.
Yeah. How often are you checking?
So a big bath here could be really good. Uh, zero percent deep.
At two fifty deep, I think, or however the hell deep we are, I think it's. Um. But merely one fifty there, right? That one fifty. Yeah, it was Potter one fifty. Do we ever, you guys ever three betting this?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, like twenty percent. I think we three bet this more, the closer we get to the button.
I'm not that twenty percent.
You're higher or lower? It looks like twenty percent's good.
So call, yeah, twenty percent seems to be decent. Right?
I think that'll go up as you get closer to the button.
Right?
Yeah, when you're that, when you're, when you're this deep, the three bet structure is not what combos do you three bet? It's how often do you three bet? Cause you three bet almost every combo in range.
Would you rather have seven six or nine?
That's fair.
All of them. Doesn't matter.
I like both.
Okay, so call here, I guess, but it's a tough spot, right?
I would get, I would continue. I would continue.
Easy.
They're so deep.
Yeah.
I mean, and once you get squeezed, I would rather have seven, six. But it's still gotta continue, right? And now.
No, no, no.
This is a fold. Probably just fold. I mean.
A fold, right?
Yeah, probably just fold. I don't know. He bets small, you know, you could call one. The problem is, it's like, this is a stronger range. It's a squeeze range.
Yeah, it's an inflated pot. We're in the middle, like, yeah, he's putting in the two people, he three B, he squeezed, like. Ten's never good, right? You're not happy. You ever call if you make a ten.
It can have a king, it's jack, king, jack.
Okay. We get one.
Hmm, I fold here. I don't think having a nine's great. Suited nine's probably no good.
I think spicy here. How spicy do you think Mr. Crazy with the river can get here?
I like his.
Right? Are you probably spicy? I just think you wanna be more. It's already three bet.
What do you think he's four bet or?
Yeah, I've four bet.
All right, say what you mean. It's not a squeeze. It's a cold four.
Well, we're gonna play this now, right? All right, so what do we do with it?
I'm folding.
Oh.
Pure fold.
All right. This one here, yeah.
It's, it's razor folds, but.
So.
I think the raises are gonna be more polar.
It's too late position, so I don't mind going down to the ace nine suited. If it was like an all your position, like if he was one pip or all your, I would just fold. But I think hijack low jack, hijack and squeeze.
Do we all agree? Cold calling for bet?
Week. I think this is not good, especially out of position.
Yeah.
Hey, uh, Louis, you should look at this cold four. Should look at the cold four range just to, so, you know. We're not just kinda spitballing here, cause I mean.
Yeah, okay. You know what I would bet here?
It's gonna be ace ten suited is the bottom and it's gonna be a sliver. What would you call for that, Louis?
I guess ace queen off.
I think, I think ace queen is not crazy. I think.
Ace five suited to.
Yes. No, I think ace five suited is much better than ace nine suited.
How about Jack ten suited?
Ooh, that's a good question, Ken. I kinda, I kinda like it. I don't know though.
Ace nine, king nine.
With ace, with nine stands and jack.
None of the nines.
So when you block the bottoms, it's not great.
Well, they're, you're not blocking the bottom of their folding range though. When you're four, call four betting, they're gonna start folding ten X.
Says not, it says non-existing Louis. You gotta just pull up a range.
Yeah.
Maxi, you are very muffled.
Yeah, Maxi. Button cut off. Hi, Jack.
Thanks, guys. Okay.
So just to, yeah, cut off. Nailed it. Ace five is in there, ace nine, not really. I mean, ace ten, not really, ace nine, not really. Jack ten, not really. It doesn't really, the only bluff here really is like king, jack. And ace five, and then like the suited tens, if you wanted to. I guess, I don't know. Do you call king, queen suited a bluff? I don't know. Maybe it is.
Yeah, for sure.
It's a merge. It's, it's like just linear, right? It's pretty linear. Minus the ace five.
Mm-hmm. And how deep is this?
A hundred.
So yeah, ace nine here, a bit out of line.
Pun.
Especially cold calling. You never wanna cold call, as you see here.
Oh, I agree. I think, uh, I think cold four betting is better than cold calling here with ace nine. Hey, just hover over it and compare it. You can compare the EVs real quick on ace nine, just to kind of look. I can hear you now.
Okay. Just to look at this, and I just cannot call any suited base here for, for not flush, and that's it.
Uh, what was the EV comparison, Louis, of cold four and calling? It's just not gonna show a profit. Like you, you can splash around a little and try to win a big pot, but it's. We, we have ace nine.
Yeah, but there's no calls.
I'm just wanna, I wanna look with the EV. Okay, so like raising is slightly losing, and it's just not gonna have calls, like you said, yeah. Sorry.
Seventeen big blinds for.
Maybe max see if your opponents are really bad and.
Yeah, this was a bit of it.
Will let you realize a lot, but.
Yeah.
This is a, you could probably call this from the smoke line. I don't think this is crazy.
Yeah, I would call.
I would call.
Okay, we're in the pickle. Big bet. Think this is a late.
I think big bet versus two opponents is probably a fold. I don't know. A friend of mine told me not to fold bottom pair. I'm just playing. I'm just playing.
Here. Three bet.
Three X. Yeah. It's fine. Cool. Um, I kinda like calling here. I don't really wanna squeeze nine X first EP-ish.
Me either.
I do wanna call though. I definitely do wanna VP this. I could see both being viable.
Although I think it does pull from like ten, nine, Jack ten from early position heads up some, but I'm happy to call here.
I would call. I would call Jack ten, King ten, these kind of hands. What's the squeezing ranger?
I think Jack ten might, I think Jack ten might squeeze. I think suited ten suited Jack squeeze.
No, not with the tens. I don't believe it.
You should.
Look at this.
Yeah, this gets in there. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is squeezing, you're damn sure suited tens are gonna squeeze.
So yeah, I was pretty sure this would be a three bet versus just the open. I didn't think it would get in there. Multiway though, I thought it would drop out.
You're just no jack. I'm not gonna one.
Plus one and hijack.
Hijack call, and then we are where?
Button. But.
Then I see.
Suited ten, suited jacks.
Oh, you can. The nature.
The suited nines are in there a little bit.
Lot of squeezing.
Every suited connector. And then sometimes they're gappers.
Yep. So the suited ace, queen, king, queen down to ace ten, king ten all does it like half the time. Hey Louis, will you look at the cutoff range just for, instead of the button, just to see how much tighter it is? Okay. So. Less calling. Raising similar.
That new thing we learn. Wanna share?
I, uh, so like. One adjustment I've been kind of trying to make is if opponents are tighter and they're not missing, and they're missing some of their, their opens and their. Their calls and things, I usually try to adjust my range. One person earlier in the rotation, so. If I'm on the button, I'm gonna look at cutoff and kind of use that as my range to kind of. Guide me in some spots. So I, I'm just trying to make sure I estimate it appropriately is all.
Right? That makes sense.
But yeah, I like this call. It's a good call. Just don't fold and it's fine. That's right. I like four or, yeah, three is good. Three or four is what.
Very multi-way here, man.
Yep. Yeah, you don't wanna go too big. I would say like four is a big bet. Three.
We don't check.
No, why would you ever check a vulnerable top pair of multi-way in position?
Because early position's probably on cap still. He's gonna check a lot. I mean, in theory. If he's a good player, right?
He should have some, he should have some checks, but like, I mean.
You got position here, Ken. The guy in position multi-way like this, as we saw more and more, uh, guy in position has a lot of betting here.
He's been a lot.
Yeah. So hand can stand a raise, right? We can. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You got double back doors. So you got backdoor flush, backdoor straight.
And I lean towards maybe even betting a bit bigger?
I don't think that's crazy. I think it's fine. Yeah. Okay, like, uh, blanky deuce. I'm gonna go like half pot here and probably play check on a lot of rivers, to be honest, if he continues. Yeah.
Oh.
Oh. Um, this is, this is Bad News Bears, guys. I think you gotta, you gotta call, but. Fold, right?
Turn jack raise is hardly ever rough, especially on this too. Like, what's your bluff? Your ace, what you got? Ace five? Or something? He started in with bluff, ace five suited.
Ace five suited would make some sense, and it's a rainbow turn. I would have only bet five again on this turn. I don't know if we have to even size up.
You kinda need like, uh, read on your opponent to continue here now. Cause if a red does that to you, I mean, you're always beat.
I don't think I'm finding a fold here, and I may be too sticky here, but.
This is a snap fold.
Versus population, turn check raise, usually I'm out.
Oh. I, I mean, if you call the turn, you gotta call it. If you call the turn, I almost feel like you have to call the river.
Yeah, he's got ace nine. You, you, you got ace nine, king nine. Got upset, over pairs, like, bad.
Were they sure?
Ace five gets there.
In a call, right? What do you guys say?
Look, I feel like the turn is like razor thin. Like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't fault any of anybody for finding a fold. But if you call this turn and you get that three. You can't fold.
Your pocket made it, right?
I agree with you.
Pretty much.
Ace five got there. Right? His, his bluff that you thought he had on the turn just caught there on the river.
Yeah, he's got ten eight too. He's got ten eight, Jack eight, baby. We blocked those a bit.
Never folding.
Snap.
Gotta see what he has.
The time to fold is the turn. If you call turn.
Yeah.
I mean.
Let me have the read on it.
I think having a ten here is kind of bad, to be honest, cause you are blocking some of like, something he might have here that he could, you know, raise. I feel like a ten's probably a. A good bluff card.
I'm gonna put this out there too. Cry committed is a fallacy. If, if you get to the river and you, it's just a player that's not taking such an aggressive line, bluffing, you can fold.
People don't give up as much these days, and there's a lot of, we have a lot of like bet calls on the turn that fold river. I don't think it's even a pocket that I think. I think it's, I think it's just like, the three is basically a brick without, with the exception of like. The, uh, unicorn ace five that he has sometimes.
Okay, so.
Five, six.
Lob, like, it's pretty much just a bad small when your edge up against another gun one.
Yeah, that's fair.
So that's good. Deuce.
What's the turn size that, that whiz likes? It's gonna probably. On full rainbow deuce. Let's.
Yeah.
Sixty percent, so I would guess.
Look at these leading turn leader. He's supposed to be leading a lot on the deuce.
Uh, leading very large on the deuce. What the heck is that?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, look at his checking range on the flop. Look at his check call range. Let's see what he's up to.
The deuce is just a complete brick.
Uh, hang on, hang on. Check. Bottom, that's deuce.
Call. Deuce.
Oh, yeah, okay.
This makes more sense.
Yeah.
All right, so yeah, you're just polarizing to like six point five here. So it's like a little over half pot. Um, small bets on the turn, at least heads up, are really not a thing on this cover run out.
What I see here is a very big bet. It's almost pot, eighty percent pot.
Yeah, like, you could do that, or the six point fives in there some, or I mean, I guess you could go one fifty just as much.
With the nine.
Figured he'd have. Any overs with the backdoor flush draw, and I just wanna. Knock them out again with a small bet. So don't go too big, don't go too big though, um, don't go too big Louis, so we can, uh, get a check raise in.
So he goes six. Uh, you should be betting bigger here, and we face a three X. Twentyish.
All right, so look at the range first. Like, what is this three X coming from? So.
There are nine over.
How about Jack eight? Jack eight is a really good one. Ten eight. Ace three is in there. Ace five is in there. Um. Set. Jack, Jack ten off. Yeah, the, the values are pretty easy to find, I think. Um. What's interesting for me is trying to find the bluffs, since we didn't have a whole bunch of obvious bluffs.
So right. Of course.
So the ten should be bad for us to have, right? You are blocking some of the bluffs.
So we call, and then the river.
That was a hundred and forty-one big blinds as a call too. It wasn't even that close.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to just give him a big bet, cause I don't think he's gonna have jams. Cause we're still too deep, cause it was, oh, it, it does have jams, okay. Alright, so like fractionally, what ratio to the pot is this though? This is like a. Sixty, seventy percent. So. Sixty-five. Okay, so it's not a full spot size bet, so yeah, it's fine. I was just curious because we were so multi-way.
Yeah, so all the cookies and then for sure. Oh, look at this.
Zero EV fold.
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you think?
It's the worst nine, right? Every other nine gets calling.
When you bet tall and they raised twenty, what do you think about folding turn here?
I would fold turn before I fold river. And that seems to be backwards.
Not necessarily. Depends on what you put on, what you think their bluff ranges. If you wanna take some of the bluffs out, then it gets probably starts falling in some at least. Like if they're not raising ace three, ace four, ace five. I mean, ten X pretty easy. Jack eight's probably reasonable. I kinda, they gotta have some, right? Jack ten off, he seems.
You block all the bluffs with the ten. You block Jack ten, you block ten eight.
Yeah, even like the obvious ones, we block some.
Go to the river real quick and look at our response. I wanna see like, if it's calling nine, so they don't have a ten, like, so nine, eight suited is a, yeah, look at nine, eight suited. Nine, eight suited's a call. More, or no, it's not, it's a fold.
Mixing.
So like the solver knows that, like, I don't know, it doesn't know.
Nine is like, uh, and eight is not good as well, because they missed, right? So eight is just as bad as a ten.
I think ten's worse, but it is bad. I do agree. Um, queen nine starts to call.
So like, uh.
Jack nine.
Great.
Jack's not great.
Because you blocked the same area of the bluffs. Look at bucket ten, basically.
Yeah, break even, right?
Yeah, you'd rather call it than nine, king nine.
Nine, S nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right. Fuck, I mean, the ten, obviously, the ten's not great here. So I mean, if you were gonna make a, uh, pretty heads up fold, this would be it.
Yeah, I think part of it too, like, when we're looking at the hands that he's bluffing on the turn. Ten eights and Jack eights and stuff like that. He's gonna check raise those at some frequency. On the flop. So like, there's gonna be less of those on the turn. He's probably not, he's probably not check raising those bluffs at full frequency.
That's true.
But he is there with his value at pretty full frequency.
Yeah, this guy's out a lot.
Yeah, so but what do we say? What, what does our analysis say when he shows up with random hands that aren't even in the range? Like, honestly. Opponent is Russian as well. Hey, what is this guy's stats, just for shits and giggles here?
Oh, yeah, we're just starting, so I am guessing that, like, uh, crazy river had the read here.
All right, so thirty-six hand, he's a twenty-five nineteen-two. I mean, I don't know, you can't really draw too much. That's a little on the laggy side, but.
But we also know that crazy river likes to call, right? So.
Yeah. He does.
Okay, we call. Uh, as we saw on the machine, having it then is not great. Uh, I think like, you, against population, unless, unless you have a mark on the guy, cause if you have a mark, I'd never fold, but without the mark. Like, if you don't know your player, it's out of line. It's a tough spot to take.
Definitely. It's very contextual and like razor thin, any way you cut it.
I feel like when people raise you on the turn, they just always beat you.
I like big bet here. This is fine. Jax is almost too strong. Like, I don't even know if you need to make a big bet there. Um, I don't know. I don't, I wouldn't raise two point five with the, the big blind being only like twenty effective, but that's nitpicky.
That makes sense, right?
I guess you figure he's gonna call off, probably do a jam, and he's building the pot against the other two big stacks, button cutoff.
I mean, it's not bad. Yeah, I don't think it's, like I said, it's just splitting hairs, really.
Oh, call, call, three diamonds.
Uh, check.
I guess, right?
I mean, what else do you do with like these naked jacks?
All in.
This guy, probably all in.
Oh, we get to see good. Eight, six off.
Oh, look at the Russian.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's the same guy. Okay, so that guy is clearly out of line, whoever this is.
Oh, yeah, the diamond.
Yeah, one six of diamond here. That was.
Well, got it checked through. You might as well try to steal it. He's got a diamond and a gutter and, well, no overs, but.
You're ignoring the, you're, you're ignoring the fact that he chose to complete this hand four ways.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Uh, I played check. Well, okay, so he's sixty effective. I think I would play chick raise here personally. Or big bet. Do, I don't know if you do a bunch of big betting out of position. I don't know. Maybe it's small. Yeah.
I think both betting or checking are fine here, honestly.
They definitely are, for sure.
Check raise. You can check call, you can lead. I think you can do everything here, just in.
Yeah.
He goes for the lead.
I think, I think you got a blast after you get called and pick up equity. I would like a bigger bet, I think. You only have queen high.
Yeah.
We're deep. Chain real quick.
Kinda deep.
Curious.
I bet nine there.
Block that or not? Me. Block. A dirty bet.
Small.
Look at all these sizes. Okay.
Yeah.
You can bet the. Not, you can trigger is a lot.
Can you see turn size too? Do we call? Real quick on a seven? Yeah.
Or bet eight?
Yeah, looks good.
Size, this is a fifty-five, right? Fifty-five percent?
Yeah, a little bit more. It was like sixty.
Okay, so do we need to call here? King nine off or six more?
Um, I honestly take it or leave it. I, I think it's a fine call, but. I would call.
I've been up four king eight. I wouldn't be surprised if king eight's supposed to fall, but I can't four king nine.
Yeah, it's, it feels like the bottom. Yeah. Maybe king eight calls too. Dude, that's.
Blind is that?
Point seven two. That's actually kind of a mistake.
Solve or solve? Thirteen?
That's a big one.
Oh, that's ten big blind. This isn't, this isn't gonna be the correct range. You're gonna have to look at an asymmetrical range to really get the answer here, because this is assuming that we're calling off with ten. Calling our life. Yeah. Yeah.
Good six, we're definitely a couple pips wider.
Yeah. Feels fine. Like I said, it's, it's kinda take it or leave it, right?
Uh, honestly, this is really close to what I would call off for seven bigs, no?
Well, it's six. You already got one in there.
I think you're gonna get to be significantly wider.
It's close.
I don't think it's a bad. Like several, several pips wider than this. Like, I expect this a lot right here. You're, you're showing up with like forty percent equity and it's. You're, you're calling six to win, what, sixteen?
Well, in GTA wizard, you can look at what he's jamming with seven, right?
You could. I think. Yeah.
I'm sorry?
They have a seven big blind range for his jam. Peter was mentioning the jam at seven big blinds.
Yeah, so go down to seven big blinds and see what LoJack jams.
Down arrow, down arrow. Um, this isn't gonna be exactly, that jamming range is off, because like our, our boy, he jammed. What do you know? This is right. Ace four. Okay, good.
So I'm gonna call.
Hmm.
Uh, the suited six kigs are wider.
I really thought it was a fold.
All the way down the king six suited.
What?
Like, suited stuff.
Are you showing something we don't see?
Uh, no.
What? He's better, he's about to show a, uh. Call. So any ace and.
This isn't, this is better.
I think I'm lagging. Alright, sorry. Uh.
Call us, please.
I'm calling.
I would call. I'm curious if you ever do squeeze the.
Happy days.
I don't like this.
I don't like it. I don't like it either.
Like, in the least bit. This is not a doc flop. I doubt, I highly doubt we ever talked this flop.
Crazy river. You don't have a downcigged range on, um, on this kind of scenario here.
He, he might, it might have been peak volume hours for him. He may just like screw, screw that up. I don't know. Uh, yeah, I'm not a big. See, like, this is, this is awkward right here. Like, if, if you play like a check rate, a check strategy. You're gonna be able to line up a, like, get all of these chips much easier.
Mm-hmm.
I guess he's afraid that check raise looks too strong. But, yeah, this is purely some exploitative strategy, I guess.
No, no, it's just not, not good. Don't leave from the blind here.
Well, two sides of the same coin. See, like, right here now, like, you, you left a lot on the table here on the river, like.
Maybe you stack this guy sometimes.
Dude, you definitely stacked this guy.
Last turn, jam river, and it's over.
Yeah, you left twenty-four on that. You left twenty-five on the table here for sure.
So leaving here, you made a mistake. You know what? Maybe you had a lot of tables and.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
And he saw, okay, I'll position. But that's probably what happened.
I do think if you accidentally lead flop there, uh, just tripling it off probably is the optimal play, but. Just shove river though, right? Yeah, I would, I would definitely go bigger on the river. With ace fours, especially like, you only have the one high heart. Um, three bet, he, he got called. I think this is fine. Pretty nasty flop.
Is this not a just a big bigger with this hand?[1742.91]
You can definitely check some here, I think.
You're blocking ace king. You have an overpair. I don't know why you'd wanna check.
Well, you bet small, you completed equity board, right? So you bet small when you bet.
Yeah, and a three bet pot, like, I would consider betting like two or three.
Never check.
You bet half pot. Yeah, it's pretty big, actually, for a flop bet.
Wouldn't have thought that.
You got all the ace kings, you got all the aces, you got all the kings.
Arrange bet, you don't have a checking range on this texture.
Mostly, I mean, it's split. You have some big.
Later, cause he doesn't have ace king, so you get.
When I'm already in a three bet pot, there's two broadways and you're welcome active. I mean, it's very often just a big left, right?
Uh, I would call because of the big blind. I think you can probably start three betting this sometimes.
Okay, so we have a bad habit and cold calling.
Did he cold call here?
Nah, what do you think you should do though here?
Twelve, I would, I would just, yeah, I would make it twelve. I like twelve. I think twelve's a really good answer.
Also, all-in might be represented sometimes.
I don't like all-in as much, but.
It's only jacks.
Yeah, well, you're, you're just isolating yourself against better hands. Like, what's he calling that's you're competitive with at that point?
If you're, if you're the small one there, you, you can take a bigger, the all-in sizing, but from the button, you're, you definitely wanna three bet small.
I would think so. Yeah, and, uh, this guy just punted, man, like.
Yeah.
On top of like, okay, he cold called, so it's like nines, tens and jacks are just like right in the middle of that range.
Well, already that three bet is pretty, pretty bad here with pocket eight monkey.
You know, I ta, I could take it or leave it with the eights, like, whatever. Like, if he three bet it, I'm not gonna like berate the guy. I think it's like, definitely.
I, I really don't like it, I think.
The raise sizing.
Two and a half.
I don't even hate the raise sizing too much. I would go bigger, but like, what, what's the range say about that? That three bet. I think it's probably a majority call, but. I could see this being like a thing.
If you're gonna three bet eights, you wanna, you don't wanna give him that price, right? You wanna make it six and a half.
I would agree. I would probably agree with you. Yeah, like I said, I could take it or, I could take it or leave it. You know, it's like, it's kinda whatever.
It's more than nines.
Not five point one. And then we're on the button.
Uh, because we're forty, it's just gonna jam, but, yeah.
You would have to look at fifty or something. That would be better representative of the SPR.
Yeah, look at fifty real quick.
This makes a little more sense.
There you go. Fifteen. Kinda big. Oh, but that's assuming you went six-nine, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I do see some.
What the hell?
Since he went smaller, look at sixty or fifty-five if you have it.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's forty effective Ken. That's why we're looking at fifty.
True.
Yeah, but since he, uh, he, he ISOed so small, you're not reducing the SPR as much at fifty when you raise. So wouldn't sixty even be more representative?
Maybe, yeah, I mean, I don't know. Check, you can check sixty. It's a, it's a click of the buttons.
Fifty-five if you have it, but I don't think that's in there.
Even more calls there.
Even more calls. Queens are all in though. How about that? For sixty on the button. Queens, I guess, cause then you get called by jacks, huh?
I could definitely see queens. Queens makes sense. Because like you said, you're putting jacks in a tough spot.
There's a six stumble.
But basically, if you wanna call, you gotta have some pair, either queens or jacks in your calling range to call some of that other splashy stuff.
Maybe he rolled, rolled a one. We'll never know.
I think maybe he, I feel like he probably.
You're with the jacks. He thought he had them.
He would have been better served to size up a little bit on the turn, I think, but it's nitpicky. I, I like, I like the line ultimately.
Didn't like that time target here.
So here. Alright, uh, let me think about this. Okay, do, how do we approach a small blind ISO from the big blind? Well, where do the bluffs come from? I think this is a pretty good bluff. I think if.
I think this will be in there.
I'm just not sure. It may be like offsuit king.
Fifty-fifty?
It's not really a thing. It's not really a thing. Where, will you just look at, would you mind looking at that range, Louis? Can you look at that one?
Yeah, this is one I need to study more.
Okay, so like, look at the kings. This is what I was talking about. You see king four, king three. It wants to unblock his trashy ace six. That's gonna be, kinda be put in the box, so.
It's very similar to the buttons or the big blinds, three bet range versus the button, that region.
That helps, yes, that's true. Okay.
Cool.
Um, he raised, he gets piled on. This, this is whatever. This is fine. I think you gotta fold though. You can't call that. I, I like that hand. Um, this is good. Maybe a little early position, actually, but I think it's, honestly, I think if people are making mistakes and then they're not squeezing appropriately, this is definitely a logical expansion to your range, if it's not already in there.
What did I stab here? I don't know. Not always.
You have, what's like, what's LoJack? Lo, LoJack, see, yeah, see, these hands, I think, go up in value if you're not getting squeezed. So like, I, I actually don't think this is bad. I think it's alright. You bet, you get a call. Um. Alright, we didn't get check raised, so if he's got a queen, it's not like a super strong one. I kinda like another barrel on the turn, to be honest. You kind of picked up equity.
It's a little too mergey.
I think like, he's gonna have ace king, we can target jacks, we can target tens, we can target.
A very, very thin bet if you back her. I like it.
Now we just lose here a lot, I think. Yeah, okay, there it is. Like, I think if you double barrel, you get folds. You gotta bring the.
I don't think so.
I mean, maybe, maybe pocket tens holds on for two, a big, a big turn barrel.
You don't think we still win a lot at showdown?
Um, you beat ace king, you beat ace jack.
Yeah.
I think barreling here is probably good, and I think you wanna go large.
But big bet.
Sticky pairs too, like, pocket sixes, fives.
Mm-hmm, you beat those, yep. I like a big bet here. Um, you're blocking jacks, you're blocking queens. You get better hands to fold, and there's a lot of uncompleted equity here. So he's gonna have like a lot of like mergey draws that you're gonna need to bring a little more gas to the fire, you know?
See, I like a checker.
I think checks fine too. I think checks fine too. I think it's gonna be big better check.
I agree.
It's, it's really thinking about this one, Louis.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's big bet, really big better check.
What is that, pot?
It's over pot. It's one point five.
That is nasty.
Let's look at strategy, right?
Yeah, I think this region's gonna be pretty polar, like, right above the nine. That's kinda like your, your trash right above the nine.
Oh my goodness, that's really big. A lot of, uh, big, big, big nets.
Yeah, so jack ten, queen ten, queen jack, king ten.
Alright.
You just box him on the flop immediately.
Well, it's like their range has a lot of like logical continues here.
Yeah.
Especially versus small bets, so.
How do you feel with seven, eight facing a one-twenty percent pot?
You feel like a fold?
I think it's got a call, no?
I mean, honestly, I think people make mistakes. Like, I mean, how often do you face a one-fifty pot bet? Um, online. It's just not really a thing, so the GTO solution.
Yeah, here it's gonna be different than what's going on, right?
So we should start doing this, right?
I would think so, Danny.
Toy around with it a little?
And what's the, uh, what's the population, um, consensus, Louis, about big bets? They're, they're bluff heavy typically, or what, what did you say? Four?
Well, like, uh, people, they don't really, when they bluff, they bet small, basically. And when they bet big, they, they're value oriented.
Right, so it's value oriented. So finding some of these like low to no, uh, these low equity bluffs, like you said, Danny, I think is pretty valuable.
So it's funny, you know, that all these boards were just like very, very big bets. It's not like it's just a, a thing on like this particular texture. Happens a lot, mostly on rainbow, right?
Rainbow, yes. Flush draws are gonna drive down the big bet frequency. Cause it's going to make their continuing range more robust.
Ten-seven-five, you can bet, over bet, almost out of the range. Crazy, right?
If I can add something, uh, that's something I went through with my coach, like boards nine low-low rainbow, ten low-low rainbow. Jack low-low rainbow, you can bet big, even pot on the flop and keep barreling big on the turn. Because they will have a lot of problem struggling with, continuing with all, all of those low pocket pairs, four, three. If you know what I mean.
Yeah, 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 no, I, I definitely agree. I agree with what you're saying there. Yep. I don't think a small bet's bad. I think this is like pretty, pretty consistent with what population does. Um, the three is kind of like not a great card, right? Um, I see, I don't like this. I think if you're gonna bet, you gotta go really big when the three hits. The three like brings in like so many draws, completes some equity. It's better, it's asymmetrically better for him. Yeah, like, if you're gonna bet, you need to go very big, but I think like checking is. Where you need to be.
Yeah, it doesn't bet, right? Cause in my, in my book, the three is a, a break, it changed nothing.
Well, like five, five, six got there, seven, three now has two pair, three, four now has two pair.
He is supposed to lead at them. On the three turns.
Yeah, like.
You, can you put a ten on the turn? See how we text?
Um, a ten does complete some equity. Like, there's a straight draw that's pretty evident there now.
Okay, so here, 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 look at this.
Like a queen.
Curious, like, if we had over bet flop. Uh, really quick, if we had over bet, and is there still a leading range on the turn?
You're right, anything above that then is a very high frequency big bet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think if it was a jack-seven-four, eh, and the nine comes off, you can still be, be, bet big. Anything that doesn't connect with the seven or the four with the low cards, you can still be, be, bet big a lot of.
To answer your question, Danny, like, when you bet really big.
I would think not, right?
Well, when, when you bet really big and you get an equity completing card that's better for the big blind, that doesn't really, uh, mess with your big betting range, he is definitely gonna have some leads, I would think. So like, go one-fifty on the flop, go one-fifty pot.
Bet seven.
Now give him the three of spades. And donk range still pretty robust.
Wow, it's a lot still. I'm just, I think I'm just gonna get it slammed in my face when I do this, but that's cause they're, uh, maybe they're under bluffing the big bet. Alright, good to know, though.
Three bet. Um, twenty-seven effective, I think this is okay. I'd still would go a little bigger.
Yeah, go six point two.
I think six point two is too big, but it's just nitpicky, to be honest. I would make it like five, six, five, seven. I would use six two if I was like eighty effective or eighty effective plus.
Hands, right? So I think that's a thing we saw.
He, he likes a lot of smaller sizings in general, it looks like. Um.
Uh, when, when it was ace king, the church, he went full three X.
I saw, oh, I did see that. That's right.
He went a little bit smaller.
Okay, I got a question about this one. I don't hate this as long as you're planning to call off, but do you wanna be calling a four bet? Do you wanna be, eh, do you wanna be kind of like facilitating this? Is this what you want here with ace jack suited?
Trying to avoid that, right?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if it really matters because it's only twenty-four big blinds, but I, I feel like I would be more inclined to.
Dollar, but I would not raise in, in the first place, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna do, yeah, like.
Cause he's twenty big blind, so we don't need to reduce SPR anymore.
Well, and that, like, what does his four bet jamming range consist of? Like, the worst AC opens is ace-ten offsuit at some frequency and like, he's got some suited wheels and stuff, but, um. His four bet jamming range is just gonna put kind of ace jack in a tough spot, I think.
Yeah, and then we are.
Even off twenty-five, it's going six point two, six point one.
Uh, part of the tournament, are you in?
Um, I think it's still early dueling.
Early, early, middle, maybe.
Suit and hands. Mostly wanna.
So these portions that like jam, how do you, uh, adjust that when you obviously have a big stack? And there's, you know, fifty sack behind, a forty sack behind?
There's, uh, chippy V-sims we can look at with mixed stacks and, uh, GTO wizard.
The, um. The, the quick and dirty way to think about it, Danny, is like, the opener is basing their open off the effective stack of who they're most likely to play with. So if they're fifty and they're opening into a big blind of forty, they're opening, you gotta think of it as they're opening a forty big blind effective stack. So when you're three betting them, you kinda have to, and you're like a hundred deep, you have to have that frame of reference that this is actually a forty big blind open instead of sixty or whatever the hell they have.
Instead of twenty.
Yeah.
In, in my opinion, people play more static ranges and especially on twenty big blinds, they don't make adjustments and just open their regular range.
Yeah, you're probably right.
Yeah, no, that's not what I'm asking, no.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know what you're saying. He's just thinking like, how do you three bet and open when there's shorter effective behind?
Or, no, no, the opposite, like, if, if we had only twenty bigs and we had queen jack suited, we're three bet slamming it. But we have a hundred bigs and there's a fifty sack behind, so even though his effective stack is twenty, we can't.
You don't jam dining with your queen jack suited.
Yeah, well, to answer your question, you just replace jams, um.
With, with three bets.
Small, yeah.
Call, yeah, depending.
Uh, do we like a call here or a three bet?
I think it mixes. I think king queens offsuit is more likely to three bet, the closer you get to the button. So I think it's gonna be a pretty good three bet, uh, forty effective. I'm guessing, I think, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess we call. I'm still stuck on the, we can talk about it later. I don't wanna stick too long.
NCP, I think you wanna keep the, their worst kings and queens in here a lot.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that's it.
The worst king then. So and then we were button, right?
Yeah. So it's the other way around. It looks like earlier position, the more it becomes a three bet, and later position, it becomes more of a, uh, call.
Plus you are closing the action, so I will not incentivize to three bet.
Yeah, that's true too. Um, I like a small bet, I think. Uh, do we like this?
You raised with this.
Do we like?
Sizings on that board too? Ace-ten-four flusher?
You could probably go big sometimes.
I would go half there.
Not with two pair.
I, I, that's what I was saying. I think with two pair, I would probably prefer small, but. Um, I don't, I don't know about the seven-six off, just to be clear. I would, um, I think it's a good raise. I, I don't know.
Check, it's a good playability and you don't wanna raise and get erased.
You raise this.
Position.
For sure, peer check.
You wanna just take a peek at the range?
I'm ninety-eight percent sure.
Alright, that's a good call.
Yeah, this is fine.
Okay.
Um, man, multi-way, I kinda like a fold. Um, if it was just heads up, I'm continuing. What's Duli say? I don't know if this is really, this really shows any sort of adjustments, but here's this.
I like small here.
Oh, oh, nevermind, I know what this is.
I'm not sure if I like it back here.
Um.
Me too. We check.
I check here.
I think your best second pair can bet. I think your best second pair can bet sometimes, but I, I check here a lot too. He's only got nineteen behind. It's kinda dicey. I, I do.
Turning two pair.
I do like, I do like the small bet on the turn here. I would still go a little larger, maybe like.
The tar needs to be a lot bigger whatsoever. Cause when you see that this queen and the ace comes, it's great for impositions. You need to blast her, no?
Well, like, I'm just thinking, like, you don't need to work too hard to get all the chips in on the river here. Like, if you go four. He calls, now it's like seventy percent. Pot size for him to call, like, I, I wouldn't go bigger than four.
I would, I would go six or seven.
How much has he got behind in, in relationship to the pot?
Nah, not that much, right?
Yeah.
Still three way too.
No, it's not, it's a bug.
Oh, it's just a bug hit four, yeah, forty five's not in there.
So what does it say?
Was he there on flop or no?
I don't think so.
Is the flop a bet? First question.
Oh, the guy on the button is, doesn't exist, so yes, I would bet the flop, of course.
Okay, never checks the flow.
Yeah.
Alright, it's like a vulnerable top pair hand.
And on the turn, you must continue with much, with a bigger bet. I think you wanna prepare for a jam on the red.
So I would pick more like six, but it's like going four.
I think it's just an SPR thing, like I think you're right, Louis, if we go a little bit deeper and you need to lower SPR more, it's gonna. It's gonna converge around like six.
It's more geometric size on the turn on the river.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Got it.
And see now like.
Now the jam's too big.
I mean, it's about pot, I think it's okay. Like, he's still getting called by a three here, so it's like.
Uh, hell.
Not too big, like too big, but too big, like we should have sized up turn more.
I agree, Danny, yeah.
A guy had a note.
There's a better, there's a better way there.
He said, I'm against a Russian, I call.
Um, would this be a good three bet? I think it's.
It's good, but the sizing isn't.
I think not good, right?
Twenty bigs, I guess, ten to bigs, maybe forty bigs effective.
I, I agree with whoever's talking. I think king three versus twenty is probably not good here. I don't.
Thank you, Maxi.
Like you're just giving them free chips.
Yeah.
This is, this is definitely a studied spot though, like, I mean, if you're finding a three bet here. He, he, he's, he's looked at these ranges. I think he's just misapplying it at twenty. Like, I think you, what does that range look like, Louis? Do we need more? Uh, you just need more ace X, more pairs? What, what?
You bluff a lot.
None of those are hand classes, guys. Those are all just like. You all are saying nothing. Everyone knows you should, you raise aces. What are the interesting ones? Jack, jack eight.
Jack seven off, jack seven off.
Yeah, there you go. Jack seven off, maybe? That's an interesting combo. Jack eight off, jack eight suited, maybe?
Oh, none of this shit. Now something will be there, but.
Oh, hey, look at those cards I was talking about. Ten eight suited, nine eight suited.
Yeah, but actually.
No, those are jams.
That's what I'm talking about. What do you think I'm asking about?
I thought you were asking the three best small range.
Okay, okay, there's, there's mixed.
I just wanna know raise.
Are you mixing here?
I C M wise, I, I, I will, I will.
Louis is not mixing, I think.
Um, so like, looking at this, it is definitely an approved race small size. I mean, it's like.
He is like, you don't really do it, right?
Maybe he rolled a ninety nine.
I'm, I'm not gonna fault him too much for it. I think it's alright, it's whatever.
Let's go. Yeah, open, right?
Yeah, that's good. Um, this is pretty good. I don't do enough of this in my game, I think. I think this is probably a. Pretty close combo, like these offsuit tens.
I don't think it's good.
Flat.
Think it's like king jack offer, queen jack offer, not jack ten.
I'm flattening this offsuit jacks, I think. And I think I'm three betting the offsuit tens.
Oh, it's raising twenty five percent of the time, so a very good one.
So, just to look at the range. Yeah, okay, so like all these offsuit tens, I'm doing, I'm doing too much flattening with the jacks, obviously, like they should be three bet.
These three very heavy. I don't find enough of this. I'm more like calling these two.
Hey, just for uh, just for. Will you look at, will you look at thirty? Because the big blind's thirty and it's, he's kind of like thirty effective.
This is thirty five.
Thirty five's fine. Okay.
Jack nine is like the dominant one.
Yeah, okay, so as we go down, like it's just pushing.
All in.
Yeah, okay. You can't, you can't all in, so it, I, I think the raise is good. Yeah, I think this is good. I would play, okay, so this is. I think I play bet here, um. Two high cards, two tone, what do you think, Louis? Yeah, I think so, yeah.
As we learn, like on these uh, plot, on these uh, like two tone boards, when as that three bet or. Your betting strategy is gonna be constructed around the card of the suit a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I think this is a very heavy frequency bet, yeah.
I like eight big blinds here, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, I think small.
Maybe small, I um.
I would go small as well.
Maybe eight's too much. I, I think I bet eight here in game.
Sixty percent check. And only that, that's two big blinds.
Wow, okay. I'm screwing that up.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, because he calls our trade that, what you think he calls with.
Well, he's gonna have uh, lowish connectors, middling connectors, um, suited ace X. He's gonna have some pairs in there.
Ever block the river?
Oh.
Broadway.
Ten percent.
I don't really like blocking. I feel like you're just gonna get, you're just gonna get blown off your equity.
You wanna just.
After turn goes check, check, you're supposed to block a lot, right?
Actually, you know what? Um, maybe turning bottom two pair here into a bluff isn't the worst thing since we three bet and we get like folds from. King, jack, queen, jack. Um, king, queens probably gonna have to fold some.
I think all the combos call.
Yeah, I don't know, man, maybe, maybe they do.
Be onto something, Galen, like bet, bet nine.
Yeah.
Then off, never a bet. Check, check on the flop, right?
Yeah, I went check, check, then you got a um, offsuit queen.
Check, check again.
And then you got a ten, green ten, was it? I don't know, no red ten. And now maybe we blow up? No, you don't, you just don't, you just don't.
Just check.
But look at the. All right, it's blocking a lot of stuff.
King ten does, king ten, queen.
Is that two or seven?
King jack is blocking.
King jack, yeah, it's the.
Is two, yeah, okay.
King ten, yeah.
They're the same color. That's troll.
Okay, so check, and then when you check, are you ever supposed to call this?
Yeah, no, I don't think so. Maybe you've turned it into a bluff, but I don't think you call.
Well. They're supposed to call.
Why does it like jack ten so much more than queen ten? Riddle me that.
Well, queen ten's not in range, so I don't see why you're talking about.
Queen ten off suit. Like, it likes jack ten way better.
I don't know if we're gonna figure this out.
The jack is on the flop, there, maybe that's.
Hey, look how smoked, look how smoked pocket kings is here.
Yeah. So you draw a call with queen jack here?
Does it do the reason they don't call with ace check?
Alright, Galen, I got something for you. Ace queen is four bet jamming pre. Whereas ace jack and ace ten are fully represented.
Close to call here, but I don't think you win a lot.
So it's, you don't like having the queen, but then queen jacket also liked more than queen ten, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's goofy, man. Uh, I don't know if I like this. Twenty big blinds is a bit. Okay, so like, why would we prefer this over a men raise?
Cause it's more comfy than calling up a jam?
Yeah, because once you open and get jammed, you need to fold this end, but once you jam, you make him fold all of this ace eight suit. And all of this party jams on you.
What about, I'm, I'm more so, more so talking about the small blind, like twenty, twenty one effective.
Is this getting close? Or maybe?
What'd you say, Peter?
Is this getting close to the bubble?
Uh, uh, I could, that could be a justification.
That was my first thought, but I feel like we're not quite there yet.
Um, put, if, if you put it in.
We, we could be.
Could be soft.
Chips, uh, put it in chips real quick. I think you start with, this is the monster stack, so you start with like twenty K chips, I think. Yeah, dude, I don't think this is that deep yet. This is like.
Six start stacks.
This is right at the end of registration, I think. Cause that guy's got nine big blinds, which, and it's a starting stack, so like, feels like the registration window just closed.
The machine says always a jam pre.
Yeah.
Don't wanna read old, right?
Yeah, I guess you're right.
Can you check the range? What's the other gems? Ace five, ace three?
I, I think it's. Not a street.
But this range is, is vastly different, though.
It's twenty effective.
I C M here, first of all.
You could look at fifty percent. Or seventy percent or something.
Yeah, yeah, you.
It's like twenty five percent.
Look at. Yeah, look at a thirty seven or twenty five, just to compare.
I think we.
You're twenty effective, Louis.
Or is it?
I C M fifty percent.
This is the, not the right one. You, you had it up. You had it up a sec.
I'm losing it.
This is it, right, fifty percent right here. You have it at fifty average, though. You need to drop that average down.
Two thirty five?
No, it needs to be twenty, cause you're only twenty effective with the blinds. There. So button range. It's, so this is at fifty percent. Now, like, if you go to thirty five or twenty five, uh, I wouldn't go that way. I don't think it's gonna really affect things too much. You need to pump it, you need to pump it up.
So less jamming, is that because we're gonna get played back at less? So we're more comfortable raise folding now?
I just don't think you uh. I, I think it's just like a risk reward thing. I don't think, I think like. Small betting gets the job done typically. So if you go to twenty five percent or near bubble, how about, just go near bubble, like, let's just. Crank it up to the max and see, yeah, let's crank it up and see what we do. Now it's like, it's wanting to pressure, so like equity driven. All of your suited broadways, they do fine when called, your low pairs, they, they do fine when called, they just struggle post flop.
Okay, that's twenty. That's how deep we can get. I see twenty five already, man.
Yeah, it kind of like falls off uh.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know, I don't hate his jam, thinking about it.
You go to seventeen as well? Just look the other direction, one pip.
No one?
Yeah. If the small blind's a bit shorter, how wild can we get? No, no, like seventeen.
It, it's not giving me anything.
Also look at asymmetric ranges.
Alright, never mind, it's fine.
Then we get call, oh no. Oh, we won, okay. Raise, jam.
Um, if we are approaching the bubble, I think I fold here. If it's like any kind of like. This is close, though.
This is gross, this is actually disgusting.
Yeah, close five, I think I fold.
I'm gonna make it a player specific situation here.
Mixing a chippy V, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I like a fold, I think.
Alright.
I mean, I got.
What if it were cut off a button? Cut off button, probably call it off.
Uh, man, maybe. That's a hard question, Danny.
No.
No?
No, because you're still at. Deep in the tournament. So even if you're later positioned, the I C M effect makes up for that, no?
I just think it gets closer, but it's still probably. Not great, I don't know.
One big line, we get away with it. Okay. Wow, we finally make a hand.
With I C M pressure from, with I C M from the small blind, do we open raise more often, uh, when we have the button, the, when we have the big blind covered?
What do you mean?
The ten, five hand. Small blind open, right? When we have the big blind covered in I C M heavy spots that we mostly just open raise.
Yeah, you do.
What do you guys think about this one big blinder?
I like it. You're blocking us, you're blocking us calling range, really, so.
When he doesn't rejam and we get an ace high board, I'm just always gonna bet one.
I'm okay with this. You could check or bet small.
Yeah. Probably checks a lot, but it feels bad, cause, yeah.
I don't like this.
This is just a call, right?
Yeah, I mean, okay, so like, if you wanted to like jam some suited ace. Okay, well, I guess we need context, like, is this on the money bubble? Like, if this is like the stone cold money bubble or something like that.
This is, I don't see it being a good thing.
Yeah. I think you're gonna wanna definitely be more polar. I don't think you wanna have a ten here, like, if you're gonna do some shenanigans, take ace five.
But what is it like, under the gun?
Not under the gun, but um. You're playing seven handed too, right?
Oh. So it's low jack?
Yeah, not really a thing without a P V. And here. Near bubble. And then what kind of uh, thirty, twenty, you cover everybody, there's a lot of short stack.
The fourth row? Oh, never mind, we're big blind.
And it's trying to do it with the suited tens, but it just doesn't pick the offsuit, the ace ten, right?
Yeah, I agree duly.
You can sort on low jack. Wait, am I lagging out again?
Suit that aces, right? Kind of a thing here?
No, we hear you, Danny.
Yeah, there it is, it's all the suited tens.
You just wanna be more polar, like, you want worse aces or like better aces? You don't want these middling ones.
And then uh. No, it's not really a thing with a sense super. More like the wheels, so.
Uh, good. Um, too shallow to three bet, I would probably. I don't know, man, they're so short behind, maybe I just fold.
Yeah, I would follow as well, right?
I, I, I definitely like this arrangement at this table. I definitely wanna be V pipping a lot, but I feel like you're gonna put yourself in a tough spot.
Yeah, it feels like you're stepping in front of the train here, right?
Like, if you flat here and then seven big blinds jams behind, and that other guy folds, you gotta call. Okay, like, this is aggressive, but I don't hate it.
This, this works, I guess.
This is, this is. Yeah, there, there must, it must be a critical stage of the tournament, cause he's playing hyper aggressive.
Is he gonna call off?
No.
Oh.
No way.
I would, I would fold.
Oh, my goodness.
Of course he calls, it's crazy river, what do you think?
Oh, I know who that, whoa, 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 you know who that was? No, this, this is, this is, this is me. I am E twenty three, eight, two.
This is you?
I swear to God, I am, yep.
This is you?
You're like this donkey calling off king ten.
Wow, wow, very nice.
Look at the stats, I, I should be like extremely nitty, because I was. Look at the stats, I, I should be like extremely nitty, because I was. Uh, I was just super short all the way to the money bubble.
The net?
So then, Galen, you know whether this is in the money or not, do you remember?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Hundred hands, look at this guy, hundred hands, he three bet.
Are we?
Oh no.
This is, this is, this is, um, this is.
This is what an aggressive net looks like.
This is slightly in the money, okay, so like, I'm, I, um, I busted my first bullet. And then I late regged with like near the, near the end of registration, so I, I just didn't have any, I didn't have any chips.
You played a hundred hands there, what are you talking about?
Well, maybe it was from the first bullet, I don't know. I, I, I honestly, I don't know, I just remember. I, uh.
Wanna see what that aggressive net looks like? He plays eighteen percent of hands and he play, he three bets off of them.
This is me.
I mean, you probably max late regged, you got a double, you got into the money, took a few. Played a hundred hands. And you're in the money now, right?
Yeah.
Trying, I tried all my, all I could to find. Eighty percent, but every time I hit the brick wall.
It's hard to bluff when you have ten bigs.
It's hard to bluff when you play ten percent of hands.
His, uh, yeah, he got moved to another table.
It's a skewed sample.
And he's, he's jam happy now.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Why not five there?
Uh, it's twenty big lines, I don't say big deal.
Twenty-three, no.
I would jam.
No, 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 no.
And not picking.
No, it's probably a significant E V difference.
What about here? Jam?
You can't fold, you cannot fold.
He made a three of thirteen, bro.
Doesn't matter. Dude, it's king queen suited.
What?
Okay, what is going on, Jesus? So under the gun open, three big blinds. We call, cause we think we're gonna.
Snap fold.
Okay, we flop pretty dead here. Are we not?
Uh, I don't like.
Tell the three blind open is not any asex.
This is crazy.
That doesn't deserve, yeah, interviewing anything.
Right.
Uh, yeah, I don't like, I don't know.
Wow.
So you're blocking kings, you're blocking queens, he doesn't have an ace. I think Crazy River knows something we don't know.
He knows something about the three X range.
That's like a little bit out of line, I don't like it.
That was wild.
Uh, you do need a call here. Fold.
Hold, right?
Yeah.
Fold, yeah.
Jack is ten.
Great fold.
For the kings.
Easy. Easy, easy game. Open?
Through that.
Fold, that's good. Um, I'm opening.
I see, I like it. Okay, we see that.
So this is, this is the same kind of texture we were talking about earlier. Where it's like nine high rainbow, it's a little more disconnected, but I still think you can probably have some larger sizings here.
That big and then double barrel, got the line.
Maybe not with king five, though, like, I don't know if having king five here is good.
King five, definitely is, it's the worst handy open, is it not?
I don't think you should open this section.
Bluff always, though.
I don't mind it, I think it's.
A good opponent can exploit you by rejamming. Very wide here.
Uh, yay, yay. We're playing twenty-five dollar tournaments, though. Come on. Good opponents?
Doesn't wanna open.
What are those?
What are those? Good opponents?
Hey, we play those takes and we are decent somehow.
We're learning, we're trying.
Six would be the line.
And what is the sizing with king six?
Two point one.
No, on the flop.
On the flop, huh huh, okay. Bard is.
Now that we're short, do we still get any pot bets?
Um, probably not really, just because it's a, um. S P R thing, right? It's gonna be weird to get your bets in geometrically.
It was deuce?
It was a deuce. Um, you still have some big bets, though. There's three, one, four, seven, five.
Bottom of the frame here, definitely one of that.
Yeah, the ba, the big bets are coming from the two overs, so like.
Okay, so over to the seven.
Yeah, well, that's where the, the frequencies start to elevate.
Okay.
Like queen ten off is got some spice to it.
Yeah, so say we bet the, what is it, the most, uh, tree? And then he calls and then we get any turn above a ten?
Uh, probably a solid double barrel.
Oh, I guess not.
Maybe not.
Whoa.
Alright.
What, it's like pure, what?
Yeah.
Was that our range?
Yeah.
Or his range?
I guess it was it.
That might have been his range.
This looks like the wrong range. Yeah, that, that's what I expected, so you see the elevated sizings on everything that's above a ten?
Above a.
Yeah, ju- just a big card.
Continues have a fair amount of jacks and tens still.
Air eight is a great card from position.
It's really hard for them to have a king, queen, ace.
Okay, if ten lead.
You know, this is okay, it's kinda whatever, I would lead smaller.
It's too big, but yeah.
I, I, you know, if they're gonna make mistakes versus this.
I don't think king nine gets to lead, no, if you have someone, something with. Acti- inactivity, activity, I would do said, to the board, you can start.
Connectivity.
Connectivity, sorry, you can start doing it, but with your air, if you start doing it with your air again, you.
Well, look, okay, so it does do some error, like, you got king ten here, king nine offsuit. Um, jack, jack nine's a complete airball, like, if, the more better hands you get to fold, the better it is, so like. You definitely wanna be pulling from like your middle high cards. So like jack eight is gonna get folds from queens, kings, aces.
You got the old pair draw, and you bink it.
Yeah, the backdoor pair draw.
I might check jam that turn.
I would bet. If you're gonna, if you're gonna take a donk line, I think.
Funny, the very same scenario, we went all in the first time, now we've been raised.
Uh, it's quite different, actually, like, we're covered like over two X from the big blind this time.
So you don't think ace five becomes a jam?
Our hand has the same incentives, though.
I don't think this is the same situation. Um, before, like, we weren't putting our, we weren't putting ourselves at risk, and like the.
Can hurt us.
And, um, I think there was also like money bubble implications before, now we're like. In the money. And, uh, you probably just don't wanna be jamming, I would think, right? There's that seem. I don't know.
Yeah, that's reasonable for sure.
Yeah, this is much more backed just to chip, a near chip E B play, right? If we're past the money, so.
Well, this was jamming at chip E V, but at fifty percent, it fell out.
I mean, you can look at it, I.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking, yeah, uh, we. Mostly open twenty-five percent jam, ace five suit, but most of our range wants to open. We jam queen, jack suit, ten, jack suit, some low pocket, pocket pairs, and that's about it.
So if you can find something where we're covered, um, by two X, so like. You need the bubble or the bu, the big blind to have like.
Second from the bottom, hope. And it's gone.
Yeah, I don't think we're near a bubble anymore, that's the thing.
Uh, do three tables then, um, I mean, just anything that's passed, or you could look at like a.
Fifty percent, right?
A fifty percent would work if you can find a asymmetrical range. You just need something where the big blind's got heaps.
Two years of this, and I'm still the only one that tags my end of late red spot, my bubble spot, my final two table spot.
You are, Ken, you are.
Like, so we know where we are, we're not guessing.
Well, you can't, you can't really do that in G G poker, remember?
Oh, you can't tag hands, right? That sucks.
Yeah, you're not the only one doing it, but.
They do it native, you have to have a native client. To do that. This isn't gonna be as close, I mean, still. The guy is basically all in to call, you need the guy to have.
Yeah.
He needs to have heaps. Uh, you gotta go deeper average.
Average, yeah.
You gotta go deeper average. Go to like average thirty, and we might find something a little easier. Um, okay, so nineteen forty-one and eleven, that's a good one.
Oh, there you go.
This is good. So it does take some jams, still.
Yeah, so it's close, right?
I don't think. Yeah, I think it's okay. I, I just. I don't know, I try to take some of that out of my game, until we get to like the very, very late stages, I guess.
What do you mean, Galen? What to take away? The shoving?
Yeah, yeah, I just don't wanna.
Hmm, that's bad, what do you do here? Go all in?
I don't think going all in is, well, I don't know, man. This is tough. Uh, it's hard to make a pair, Louis.
Maybe you just. You're kinda stuck, right?
Yeah, all in seems great.
Maybe you just go all in here.
I think you need to stack off, but most of the times you'll see better ends.
Yeah, it feels, feels bad, man.
But you have to stack off.
Yeah, I guess you just.
Pumping it in.
Whoa.
What's with the fold? Very, very tired.
I don't think it's crazy, man, like, but. I would, um, I still think you gotta go.
Maybe had a read on, on the opener.
Let's look at, let's look what he's up against, you get to see at least. Kings and aces. Kings and aces.
Great fold. I mean, not with that runout, but.
The runout is unfortunate, but.
Silly hand.
Uh, let's say he had a read.
Alright, we're down to ten, okay, I can get behind this when you're at ten. Seven. Uh, yeah, it's probably fine. I don't know, man.
I don't know.
You gotta fold, wow.
Oh, happy days.
Jam.
Yep.
Uh, this is probably fine.
Yeah.
How, how deep are we in trouble?
This, this is actually in ten percent, this is not good, you jam sevens.
Ten percent, what do you mean, ten percent of the field left?
Yep. From what I remember.
Okay. Sevens.
It feels very close.
Okay, we survived.
We triple up?
That is sweet.
Uh, this is good.
I might wanna induce with that one, but it's fine.
So we switch tables again, is this the final table?
Hmm, I would say probably not.
Nah, shouldn't be yet, right?
How many total hands, Louis? You can look at the chip stacks, and if they're not in like the multi-millions, it's not.
About, I'll play in the hand this year.
Uh, that's all.
Uh, I like this.
Alright.
Man, I might fold here.
What? Nah, really? Oh, you from under the gun.
Yeah, dude, your E P and like middle, middle of the field jams on you.
Yeah, 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 I think it's a fold.
What if it's eight tables left? Not, not three tables. You know, three tables, maybe, eight tables, ten tables.
I think the later you get into a tournament, people don't have, like, I think people are just tighter in general, so like, if you're calling the margins of your. The margins of your calling ranges, or whatever you're looking at, you're probably just losing, is what I think. Now, if I was like three positions to the right, let's say I was opening hijack and the button jams on me, I'm calling. But yeah, like, I feel like this is just what you see so much here. Um, I'm jamming here.
Bink.
Um, probably a not all in raise, make it two point five.
Two, he folded to two.
Raise. Uh, bet. You can maybe bet big on this flop.
I like this, I mean, third, that's big enough.
Bet big.
You got two overs, backdoor flush, backdoor straight.
This texture doesn't.
Look at the board.
Think two is right, think this texture.
Jack high is good for us, but. But it's, uh, so disconnected, right? There's only the. Like jack seven four, I could get behind a bigger bet.
Well, big bets.
Yeah, just small bets. I like it, I like. Um, probably not, I think the nine's gonna be reasonable for his continue range.
Okay.
I like this bluff, though, this is what champions are made of.
I'd rather jam here than, oh, he does jam, alright. I thought he called.
Ace of heart, blocking the flush.
We can have the deuce.
Yeah.
I guess he can have it, too.
So we get away with it, very nice spot, right?
Mm-hmm.
Sweet.
Um, this is, this is whatever, he's only opening, he's only opening four, so if you wanna kind of, I. I think isolating the, the opener's fine. Especially when you're gonna hit a straight.
Yeah, right.
Min raise off four.
I'm checking. Uh, betting's probably fine, betting again, smallest four, baby?
Yeah, he has two bet river, he has value.
He just doesn't have a lot of queen X when you make it to the river with this line, so I think like you can.
He's got by jack ten, king ten, I think it's a good spot.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Uh. Shenanigans, maybe? Yeah, this is okay, whatever. Offsuit aces are fine for that, I think. Um, I like a call here.
Isn't a seven one of the ones that would check behind some?
Uh, yeah.
They're all the ones, they stay three, ace four.
At this level of the.
Those ones jam more, right?
I think it's, this is a fold, right?
I think you're right, Danny. I'm gonna fold here.
Alright.
I would fold every, every time, yeah.
That's small?
PKO, maybe?
Double barrel.
Man, yeah, I think you got a double barrel, I, I, okay, so how big are we going? You're unblocking both of the flow straws, do you guys like sizing up here?
Fifty-five percent of the pot is good.
Yeah.
Go five instead of four.
Okay.
Thing is, we have fourteen big ones.
I like the raise, I like the bet, I like the check. I like the check, um, call, I call sometimes, what do you think? I don't know, I call here sometimes.
Oh, are you a champion?
Oh. He turned third pair into a bluff, do I like this? I don't know if I like this.
I don't see a ten a ton when you call.
I don't like it.
You're not getting, you're not getting fold from asex, so you're beating bluffs, you're not getting folds from asex, like, this is like specifically to target a ten.
A ten, right?
But how much asex checks behind the turn?
It doesn't really matter, I'm just saying, like, if he has asex, he's not folding.
It does matter, because if he never checks behind asex on the turn, then you don't have to worry about it.
So you're just targeting a ten then, that he's deciding to barrel the river with?
Sure. King ten, queen ten, jack ten.
I mean, if you're, if you're trying to target a ten, okay, I just think I'd call here, just because. I don't know if I need to turn second pair, effective second pair, if we take what Danny said into account. Um. Into a bluff.
That's fair, too.
Yeah, pretty crazy spot, right?
It is.
Call is better than fold.
Oh, you don't, you can't fold, I don't think. I think it's good to have some of that. I think it's good to have some of that stuff in your game, though, like, being, being capable of, you know, pushing people off better hands. Even when you have showdown, I think is good.
So this is probably final table?
No idea.
Or final two.
How many, uh, put it in chips real quick, you should be able to get a sense.
Final two, maybe, cause we haven't seen shorthanded yet.
Ooh, this is a lot of chips, this might be final table, this is like final two, final, this is final table, final two, final three, tops.
Something like that, right?
Yeah.
Like, those are, that's a mountain of chips.
It can't be FT if we haven't seen shorthanded yet.
Wow, um, takes ace ten, turns it into a mega bluff.
Yeah, that's, that one is absolutely crazy, it's crazy.
I don't like having a ten here, you're blocking in the bottom of the range, you're blocking the calling range. Having an ace is good. I think you wanna be more polar here, man, I don't know, I kinda like folding, I think.
I think it's, yeah, just call, flat and go and sim flop.
Yeah, maybe, maybe just calls, okay.
Offsuit aces here are not blocking much, right?
Not, not first two ranges, right? Like, this, this is ballsy.
This is very ballsy.
Yeah.
I like it.
Alright, so we're seven-handed now, so it's not final table, um, this has gotta be final two tables or. Alright, so now we're, I like micro here, or call, I like micro call here.
Final two, I think you're right.
Um, this is.
Another gift.
Alright, so you can tell he studied because he went ten percent when he had the top set, like, that's pretty good. Um, I think this is more of an added position thing, though, like, taking the ten percent.
Yeah, I don't think you do ten percent in position, you do it out of position.
Yeah.
In position, you can check, you don't need to do the ten percent.
Um, the jam, I like, I think this is good, um, I'm gonna jam like most of my strong kings and aces here. You get called by a six, whatever, it kinda sucks, you probably should be getting folds from hands like that at this stage, I would think.
Dude, I'm marking that guy, what the hell?
Uh, this is good.
Call me with a six off.
Okay, so that guy's super aggressive, right? He called off with a six and now he rejammed queen, king off, which is probably a good rejam, to be honest.
Yeah, get the out of my tournament.
Uh, this is the one, I think this is the final table, right?
Uh, no, we're still only seven-handed, it's gonna go nine-handed when it's final table, unless there was like some crazy situation.
Yeah.
It's still final two, we got rebalanced to the other one. Something like that, no, maybe not, actually.
Call.
Yeah, no, yeah, we probably got rebalanced to the other one.
Call. Enjoy. Uh. I don't know about betting into two people here.
Yeah.
The fives are asymmetrically good for the big blind. Um, ace is pretty good for the caller and uh, I honestly, ace is okay for everyone, except for the big blind, maybe they would be jamming aces.
I don't mind taking one shot at it.
I would take my shot on the turn, I think, if I was gonna take one.
What ace do you bet to the flop? Ace, king, ace, queen?
I'm playing, I'm almost just range checking there, yeah.
Range checking, okay.
Uh, just put him in. Final table.
Table.
And you start with aces.
With aces.
And you start with this, look at this.
God.
I don't like this, I, I don't like this.
What?
Yeah, big mistake, you wanna do a gallon here, you wanna call and then have someone else jam onto you.
Yeah, you let this guy, you let the guy with a hundred big blinds just off the hook, if he's got a hand like tens or jacks. He's just like. He's free rolling you. Uh, I like a continue here. I fold.
Gotcha.
If you're defending it on the flop, I think you, you can still make second pair, so I would continue, cause you have the over, oh, just aces again. Um, kind of big, I don't know if I wanna go, oh, no, dude, how, how do you not win this term?
Trap, trap, trap.
Just call him! You're letting him off the hook.
Oh my god, you just have games, you fucking luck box.
You just cooled him, that's all.
What?
Alright, so this guy, that's punty, man, he should not be coming. He should not be five bet jamming.
He should, he should not have.
He should just call her, right?
Yeah, he should just call.
Called the three bet.
Yeah, you just need to call the three bet, like, that's kinda wild, man, like, I block, you don't block any aces or kings here, so.
And who said there is no value in poker?
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Yeah, it's your tournament to uh, lose now at this point. Um, queen seven, okay, sure.
As chip leader, maybe?
I think, I think, okay, like, it's a very situational thing, but he's got so many chips at this point. He can just start handing out presents left and right, boxing people up. Like, uh.
Another thing to, another thing to think about is, is the, is a short stack, is, who is opening to a big stack. And the button also has a big stack, so his tie tier is very tight, a ranger is very tight.
He should be tighter, right?
You check raise here.
That being said, I'm going to be boxing him up.
Even though he's tight, it's, okay, checks behind.
Just because he's tight doesn't mean that he has aces every time he opens.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, we still wanna check raise this hand, right?
Hmm, yeah, I, I could see check raising there, being alright. I, I just like, I like these relentless small barrels, like, you, you don't, you don't need to overpolarize in any of these spots at this, in this situation.
Yeah, cause you just have a ton of fold equity.
I'm just gonna fold this, I, I, I know it's probably a fine call, but um. I'm just gonna fold.
Very close, right?
It's only eight.
Calling jams a little bit too wide on ICM. Is that right?
I think the, the king ten earlier for ten bigs was a punt, that one I think is okay.
I think it was a.
Eight in the tournament, it puts additional pressure on the fifteen, the nineteen and the twenty-three as well, so I think I'm.
That is true.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and honestly, Danny, the king ten earlier was definitely, he has me friend tag, so I mean, it was obviously a donation, alright? Don't get too hard on the guy, don't get too hard on the guy.
It was a win-win for him.
Oh my goodness, look at this one, button open, he opens the box.
Yeah, I don't, man.
This is, uh, this is chippy V approved.
Yeah, this is probably not bad, to be honest, um, I, I don't know. At an ice, at a final table, though, if it's still using this, or if it's like shifted more blocker oriented.
Right, that's the question.
I think is the big stick you jam a lot of this portion.
Maybe, maybe you're right, I ha- I, I'd have to look at this, I don't know.
I like it.
You got a final table spot, Louis, just pull it up. Chip leader versus a guy you can box up from the button. Did we lose, Louis? Can you guys hear me?
Alright, there are.
There he is.
Um, what do you wanna see?
Um, just find a final table spot, six max or whatever, six.
Yeah, average forty, forty-ish.
Just find, uh, where you have all the chips. You have all the chips in the big blind, right, uh, do that, that one with the cutoff where you have a hundred and twenty-five. And the cutoff opens forty, that's too deep.
Sort, sort on button. And then we'll find a, a big stack big blind. There you go, twenty and sixty, oh.
There's a sixteen and sixty-three.
You gotta go backward, you gotta go backwards, Louis, make the arrow go down. Twenty and seventy is pretty good.
Perfect, two up from where you are.
Twenty opens, the only thing I would say is, there's not another really short stack, there's a thirty.
This one?
No, 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 we're in the big blind.
Ten sixty.
Up one.
Up one, this.
Yeah, it's close enough, right?
Maybe.
Although, in this one, buttons opening into two big stacks.
He is the shortest, so he has less to risk here.
Uh, I, there's, there's a better one I found.
Well, even in this one, he's still rejamming, so.
Yeah, right in there.
It, it can only get better, right?
What's Dooley's thing?
Uh, here.
Yeah, whoever said you're doing it a lot with this portion of range was spot on. It's like right in and around there.
I think it was yay yay.
This one, uh, he has a lot of ICM pressure on him. For an open here, no blocker, nothing? Yeah, wouldn't, this is a mistake, I think.
Uh, I mean, I don't know, it's whatever.
It's whatever, the, the button and cutoff shouldn't really play back at you much with the short guys in the blinds.
If they're letting you get away with murder, you know.
Yeah, they just had it.
Do it, if they're not letting you get away with murder. Don't do it.
Uh, Dooley, he's shorter in yours, so I guess, uh, huh, interesting. Doesn't like that combo anymore. Shifts more toward the blocky stuff, the shorter he gets. Ugh. Yeah, can't fold, right? Nice.
Uh, yeah, this is a good bet, we can even size up here, or?
Mm-hmm, but yeah, I mean, I think it's fine.
Get boxed.
I don't love the double barrel. Guess it's fine to just pressure.
Dude, it's Christmas time and I'm Santa Claus, when you got that many chips in that situation.
Yeah. I'm coming to collect. No way I'm dunk jamming any river, just let you put it in for me.
So he checks the flop. I don't know if I like. He, he checked the flop and then he starts barreling on the deuce, I don't know if I like this as much.
Yeah, it's a bit, uh. Like we called our raise pre-flop and then check, check, and then we just stop, it's kind of a cheap spot to me, right?
We're a big blind or is this blind on blind?
Oh, I'm, yeah, nevermind.
Small blind, we called.
I actually, uh, I don't hate this as much, I'm sorry, I thought we RFI'd, I didn't realize we defended.
Oh, we live called.
I do not like barreling, uh.
What the hell?
I do not like betting the king. Um, his continues, like, that we would be targeting on the turn, a lot of them have a king in them. Like ace, king, king, queen. You know, I, uh.
There is a lot of lines that I see that the, uh, against the thinking player, he will just get owned. When he does those stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When a king comes, what do, what do you represent when you bet here? What, you don't have straights, you don't have.
King high spades.
Maybe, maybe king, like, you're gonna have.
If I have eight something here as the big line, I snap call.
This is like, this is like jack, jack king can do this sometimes if it didn't raise pre, maybe like. Deuce, king of spades could do this, uh.
Suited, jacket suited is a good candidate for this.
Maybe jack eight could do this, I, I don't know, man, it, you're, you're, it's just thin. I don't think jack eight goes small on the turn is the problem, I don't think jack eight does that as much.
If you think about the turn, right, see, he doesn't have, have any jacks, or jack eights, because he bets so small.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Small. Call, I just call, why, why, why do you wanna do this? You're in position.
It's been. Blows draw with the, a bear, uh, no, just two over and a flush one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a fan of the jam on the flop, but.
Yeah.
It works out, they, they deal three ways, so you're not gonna see much.
Exactly, so from here, uh. They made a three-way deal. So that's how he won six thousand bucks. With jack five, blah, 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 deuce, blah, 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 and all, and all, and thank you, thank you, have a nice day. Alright, well, well played.
Yeah, good game.
Actually. Like. The cold calls he needs to improve on, uh, the sizing with three bats, uh, calling jams a little bit too wide on ICM. What else would you tell a crazy river?
What he does well is, he is able to find bluffs that, you know, I think some people don't find. Um, I would just be cautious of turning hands that are too high in your range into bluffs.
Yeah, like a pair, stuff like that, right?
I think, I think turning pairs into a bluff in certain scenarios is good, and I think like. Um, I think he's on the good side of that in a lot of it, it's just, you gotta ask yourself, do you need to turn second pair, effective second pair into a bluff?
Yeah.
Kinda thing.
Would you guys, uh, tell crazy river?
What do you think, Pete?
Another, another takeaway would be, um, study donk strategies, um.
Oh, yeah.
Cause a couple of times we saw some, uh, donks on boards where you just don't donk.
That or manage table count a little more effectively, one of the two.
And multi-way pots be a bit more cautious.
Oh, yeah, I would look at multi-way pots too, because he was, he was just like barrel, barrel, barreling at some spots. When, like, checking.
Fast, like he folded that up there.
The jack nine, yeah. Um, goes both ways, for me, I think, uh, overall, some sizings were just a smidge on the small side. Especially pre, I saw min raise blind on blind, it seems a little weird and some of the three bets were a touch small, but it's pretty nitpicky. Think he played really well.
Mm-hmm, yeah, his turn sizing seemed to be underpolarized in some spots also. Where he wasn't using geometric sizings, where he ended up kind of lopsided on the river with his bets.
Yeah.
But, um. But like you said, it, it's nitpicky, I mean, the guy played well.
Yeah, so well played, you crazy river, thanks for sharing, and see you guys around.